If you could read the next item.
That's going to take us to item F2, Galita Train Depot Status Update and TIRC P Slip Up Mental Funding.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. We're aware of the time and we wanted to give kind of an abbreviated version of what you have in your staff report. The main areas of focus we want to bring to your attention is obviously, we can do a brief overview of what's happened with the Train Depot and the latest, you know, design and that, what's come about since the last time you saw it in January of this year, actually, when you approved the EIR. The second one, and most importantly for staff, is to authorize this evening the city manager to set aside $1 million as committed fund balance as a possible match for supplemental TERCIP funding. TERCIP is the California State, it's the Transit and Inner City Rail Capital Program. It's the original funding that the city secured to help build this Train Depot. So briefly, background, you have it in your staff report. Won't bore you with too much of that. Read at your leisure as well, again, and to the community. One thing we wanted to highlight, just in terms of costs that have increased over time, is we did have some run-ins with costs going up as a result of going to the Design Review Board a number of times, I think it was three times. And I think in all sincerity, that did create a better product. And we're well aware of that and very thankful for that, but it did create some delays in time, additional resources. And then also, just historically, the cost estimate that was provided at the time the grant submittal was done was very rudimentary in terms of what was submitted. It was on a very, very tight timeline. And essentially, it came from architects' drawings and some projections out. In order to be competitive, we had to submit it and to get onto it. But as, as we all know, things have changed. In 2018 was a different environment. And then we find ourselves now in 2022, now reaching the 100% design plans, which we can quickly go through for your convenience. But really, it boils down to the construction costs of the project have substantially grown. We've taken attempts at the 35% drawings to reduce those through a process called value engineering, shrinking the size of the building, looking at materials, construction methods, all the above, including looking at the site itself and what's required in order to produce this project. With that still, we just got the most recent cost estimate for construction, which is included in your staff report. And so what we did is, almost fittingly enough, November 15th, all of a sudden, there's a source of additional supplemental funds from TERCIP, which kind of go in line with kind of the pain and pressure we've been feeling, which is construction costs, construction costs, construction costs, inflation. And it was an opportunity for us to submit and to help bridge that funding gap. That had a quick turnaround. I think the final due date was December 6th. Turnaround for awards will be in January. And we'll know more than how competitive we actually are. At the end of the day, the $1 million is essentially 15% of the additional construction costs that we're looking at, that we need out of a total of 6.59 million. We submitted 5.59 million for the requested TERCIP. And in order to really have a competitive chance, we had to have some sort of a match showing that the city had skin in the game. With that said, I want to give an opportunity to Mr. Kamadi, if he wanted to share anything else that he thinks I'm missing. I know we're going to try to go fairly quickly on this, but essentially, I think that's the core question for the council this evening.
Thank you, Jaime. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think the only thing I would add is regarding the supplemental TERCIP funding and the competitive nature of it, the intent, as we understand from SB CAG and also attending the workshops that they put on, is to leverage federal funding that many of these rail projects have, as well as other local funding. But really, the big money was in the federal. And if they weren't able to secure additional state funding, these heavy monstrous chunks of federal funding would be lost for these huge rail projects. So this was the impetus. So now we're coming in as a small project. And the advice and counsel we got was we had to establish some, some level of leverage to make it attractive. Otherwise, we just got lost in the big, in the big pool. So maybe that provides a little more justification for the $1 million.
And with that, if it's okay with the council, I was going to go briefly through these slides. You have them in your packet, more so for visually to see kind of what it looks like as of now. First of all, is the proposed site plan. There's been some modifications over time. A lot of it had to do with parking and adding kind of a little bit more landscaping along these buffered lines on the, what would be what the west side of the property into the south. That originally hadn't been part of it. The building itself, trying to shrink it and make better use of these exterior pylons. You know, all of the items having to do with drainage, all of those things are real cost pressures for the, for the building and for the project. And having addressed those, the electronic, electric vehicle parking, the solar roofing, all those things are, are what we heard loud and clear from DRB, from the community, that were important. We've also been on a parallel track, working with our lead consultants to secure platinum status for this, this project if we can. And the city's minimum threshold is silver. So we're still trying on, on multiple fronts to get to the points where we can be, hopefully even at gold, and if we're able to make it to platinum. The roadway improvements and how this enters into the building and the site have been adjusted with input from numerous stakeholders, including local property owners, the folks from SB Bike and Coast. Not everyone is getting exactly what they wanted, but we do feel like we have the opportunity to meet, you know, heads and shoulders above what's already there. And that was one of the real primary reasons for going after the grant. The next slide, just visual of what it would look like from coming in from that perspective. Again, a lot of this came from DRB in terms of color palette, kind of the look and feel of the building. We even had a small subgroup of folks that we worked with to really get into the details. So we're, we're very excited to bring this forward. It's got a lot of a positive attention. Again, some additional exterior view, so you can see what it looks like if you're standing in front of the building, kind of to the side. And one thing to note is there is no back of the house for this building. It's a very, very public building from the sense that you have to look at it from every single dimension. So you can't really cut corners here, cut corners over here, because you have to essentially be able to view it from, from every angle. Interior views, this just gives you a sense of kind of the, the presence, the height, some of the color palettes that we're looking at to create those neutrals feelings and neutral color palettes, but also the importance that we've placed on durable materials, things that, that look great, but actually age even better. One unique feature, I think we brought this up in the past, was on the west side of the building, creating within this multipurpose room, this kind of community room, the ability to have kind of inside-outside access to the rest of the site. We really wanted to create something that was inviting, that could serve multiple purposes. And this is kind of a unique feature of the building. You'll see on the, on the right side, you know, kind of how the lighting from the above. God, I'm looking for the word. What is it?
Skylights.
Skylights. Provide lighting for, for the facility. Really hard to see the detail on this, but this is the floor plan you'll see in general. Here's the multipurpose community meeting room. We have an electric room here, right off the side of it, furniture storage here. There are men's and women's bathrooms and also a gender neutral bathroom that was included after we got some feedback that was actually incredibly worthwhile and helpful. We also have some available office space. We could have sheriff officers work out of there if needed. There's also space available for staff from, from Amtrak or even other bus operators if they needed to use some of that space. So we tried to design this as flexible as possible. And then also you have kind of just what you would normally think of, which is the main waiting area here, along with benches around to take advantage of our beautiful weather, not necessarily right now when it's 40 degrees out, but certainly for throughout most of the year. And then one of the other bigger features was a cafe onsite to serve as either a restaurant or kind of food service, the kind of quick meals for people to get on, on their way out, on their way here. We'd also be looking at lease opportunities with more established restaurants, if they wanted to have like a quick-to-go area, but then also have an actual sit-down place for, for food. And just some of the color palettes that have been selected over the time. There's some influences that we see here related to members of the CHMASH, who have been really good about sharing their time and their ideas. They've, they've expressed gratitude for, for actually reaching out to them and including them. We'll also be talking to them a little bit more, I think, at the end of January and February, just to make sure that we do things in a culturally appropriate way. The number of language, versions of the language that will be used to describe some of the landscape materials, landscape plants. And then also taking inspiration from some of the patterns that we've kind of coordinated with them to see if they were appropriate. One thing to keep in mind is we're not trying to recreate anything. We're, we're trying to show and demonstrate influences of the area. So we don't want to make something that's, looks like we're trying to copy something, right, without being true to the, to the culture. And then also making note of that in, in the signage in the area to give people perspective and some of the history behind that. So that was a very important part of that process. Site furnishings, these are just some examples. We promise the Caterpillar will not be that color. We'll, we'll make sure to have something a little more. You get what I'm saying. And then, so these are some of the, the features that we want to have, though, in, in order to not have it look so cookie cutter, have it be functional. And then lastly, we're just going to leave this open for questions. We realize it's late, but this is an important moment in the, in the process. And we're looking for your feedback and your direction, so.
Thank you for that. Councilman Macariaco.
Thank you. I'll keep my, my questions very brief. Can you just give us a status, you know, a lot of what's driving this from the value proposition perspective for Galita residents and the Galita businesses is the commuter rail service aspect that's created by this project. So where are we at with LoSan adding customer commuter rail service, you know, to Southern California in this area?
Well, thank you for asking that question. And just, I forgot to introduce the team, but we actually have Joe Kamadi here, obviously from COM3, who's been helping on this project for quite some time. And thankfully, Aaron Bonfilio, who is now the Director of Transit at SB CAG, is actually on the phone or on the Zoom call this evening. So we wanted to have him here to help address some of those questions, to get to the most up-to-date information. And if it's okay with the council, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bonfilio. So you can go ahead and mic. Perfect.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Aaron Bonfilio for SB CAG. As Jaime mentioned, I'm here to help answer any questions regarding the project. And specifically to your question, Councilmember Macariaco, the LoSan Rail Agency did cut back quite a bit of service during the pandemic, which we all know, and now operates a much reduced level of service. But they are bringing service back in phases. In particular, they have an optimization plan, which was adopted by the, the LoSan Agency earlier this year, which calls for eight round trips per day to and from the station every two hours. Presently, that schedule is going to be from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM arrivals. And departures would be, leave from the station as early as 6:00 AM and return back. Or the last train out of there would be close to 9:00 PM. That said, one of the two trains that is presently slotted but not yet scheduled for return would be the morning arrival train just before 8:00 AM. But we are working, SB CAG is with VCTC in Ventura County, where I was previously for about a decade, and MetroLink, the SCRA. VCTC is a member agency of their system. And we're working with them on a possible demonstration pilot. And we'll be receiving a proposal a little bit later, early into the calendar year. But that said, LoSan does have that slot available still that would arrive early morning. And we hope to make use of it one way or the other, either with LoSan or with MetroLink, using our leverage and partnership with VCTC.
Okay. Just a quick follow-up. Would there be any opportunity with MetroLink or the other provider to have at least one trip a day that is on the earlier side for those businesses that have a little bit more of an, you know, round-the-clock schedule? Or I was talking to some, some local employers recently that they do 410 schedules. And so they have people that come in like 6:00 in the morning or 7:00 in the morning, and they work a long day, and then that allows them to only work like a Monday-through-Thursday schedule. Would there be any possibility of having something from MetroLink where they could, or someone else where they could come in earlier, like get here at 6:00 or get here at 7:00, to meet the needs of those businesses, particularly some of the tech businesses that like to offer those more flexible work situations so that they can maximize people coming to the office rather than just wanting to work remote?
Potentially. In our request to MetroLink for their proposal, we, we identified three times in the morning. Because one train frankly is really not enough. Commuters need options. They need backups if they're running late, for example. Fortunately, the Coastal Express Bus Service does arrive as early as 5:15 in Galita. But that said, we know that the train is very attractive, especially to the, the businesses along the rail line there. So that, that is something that we're considering. It is challenged by the fact that we don't have a lot of capacity on the line for dual trains to pass one another. And there is a train departing Galita at about a quarter to 7:00 in the future plan, so headed south. That, so that we need to time it and make sure that we're working in both directions in concert. But, but yes, that is in the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Bonfilio.
Mayor Pretend Richards.
Thank you. Along those lines, I also see that there's some budget that's mentioned in here regarding the LoSan SB CAG Network Integration Plan. Can, can you describe what that entails?
Sure. It was completed just before my time at SB CAG, but I did participate in the advisory committee that met with the former director Scott Spalding and staff. Effectively, CALSTA, or the California State Transportation Agency, was in the process of developing network integration plans all across the state in that cycle of TIRC P funding. And identified awardees for recipient of funds to develop network integration plans. While we in Santa Barbara County were the recipient of the funding and helped facilitate development of that plan, that plan was effectively to facilitate the state's needs to further build the state rail plan and the California inner-city bus plan. So while on the one hand, it was a project that we led here in Santa Barbara County, it was part of a greater program throughout the state. And you'll see through that same cycle, awards to Monterey Salinas Transit and other agencies to develop network integration plans as well.
Okay. That, thank, that's helpful. I also see in that budget sheet, it mentions the purchase of electric vehicles. Can you describe or remind me, I don't know if we learned about how they would be used, but can you tell us about that?
Sure. A collection of projects were submitted in concert with the Galita Train Depot. And shuttles were included. At the time, it was envisioned that those shuttles would operate as first-last-mile connections to local institutions, the airport, UCSB, for example. SB MTD was also a recipient of electric vehicles through the state Transit and Inner City Rail Capital Program. And due to some redundancy in service, those electric vehicles have been shifted over to the Easy Lift ADA Pair Transit Service. However, the goal with MTD is still to provide electric shuttle or electric minivan connections to and from the station in what they're calling their On-Demand Wave Program. I think MTD has come to the council before. They've made presentations here in the city. And, and just to further clarify a point that was made earlier regarding the supplemental funding and this opportunity, it is only available to awardees if they are bringing local or federal funding to the table. So for example, this project would not be eligible to submit for supplemental funding if there was not either a federal component or local dollars as a match.
And if I could just add on to that briefly, part of that is not, we can't point back to what we spent previously, like the acquisition, which was $6.7 million, which is a very, very large portion of the project cost as a whole. So I think to his point, you know, we have to have new commitments that were not part of a previous application.
Okay, thanks. A couple other questions, and I think this is maybe just for our staff here, regarding the electric vehicle stations. And I know that that's part of the plan, is to have some electric vehicle charging in the parking lot. I know that when we, you know, first planned this several years ago, there were certain requirements or certain numbers of EV stations that we thought was appropriate. I also know that those numbers are, seem to be increasing, like there's more and more demand for them and more and more interest and more and more people driving EVs. Have we looked at whether the numbers that we have programmed in here for EV charging stations is appropriate? And if not, is there a way that we can at least have the wiring there for, you know, adding them later if the cost is too much to add them now?
Chair, and I'll, I'll make a first quick attempt. We also have our architect on the line as well that we can call on to, Mr. Jim Keenan is in attendance. But really, one thing we found through this process is that the city's title or chapter, section 17, I'll call it that, chapter 17, Title 17 of the Galita Municipal Code, is one where the standard for requirements for charger, EV chargers per stalls, per 10 stalls, was already really high compared to the state 2019 Cal Green requirements. So our requirements here were 10%, while Cal Greens were 6%. So we were already kind of ahead of the game back in 2019, 2018. And it appears that Cal Greens codes will be trying to match those codes coming either this year or next year. But we do feel like that we've taken the evaluation in terms of looking at what the, the whole project as a whole is intended to do. I want to reemphasize for the folks at home that this is a greenhouse gas-funded funding, right, source. It's intended to reduce greenhouse gases. And so part of that is the rail, but it's also the electric, the electric vehicles, electrical vehicle charging. So we believe we're, we're at the point where we're providing 12 EV charging stations, which we believe is a fairly good amount. But we also have taken the opportunity to make sure that we have additional capacity going forward. So I'll ask Mr. Keenan to, to add on to that, and so I don't pretend to be a expert. Mr. Keenan, if you're there? You're, you can speak now.
Okay. Thank you, Jaime. Yes. Yeah, currently, we do meet the, actually, the future Cal Green requirement at 10%. There are some nuances to the new Cal Green requirement as far as the, the type of EV charger, the tier one versus tier two versus tier three. So we'll be incorporating that as well. We have bus charging, we have stubouts for future bus charging. So that when these, we have two stops for the buses to allow for that. Currently, the, the way the existing electrical is set up out there, there's an existing transformer trying to utilize on the, mounted on a pole. And we're adding a second transformer mounted on the pole specifically for EV charging. It allows for a few more stations in the, to be added in the future. But if we were to add, you know, if we were to go into the 15 to 20 EV charger station range, we'd have to add a ground-mounted transformer. And that would take up more space and basically abandon the existing pole-mounted transformer. So it's part of a, a cost-saving measure of using existing infrastructure as well as, you know, trying to save space on the, on the ground to maximize the number of parking stalls.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. I would just say that I, I would like us to try to have, you know, as many as we can programmed, especially given that we're already looking at 17 here at City Hall. And I think that, you know, using a parking lot at a train station seems to be a prime location for where we would want to have that for the people that are traveling, that are, that are parking their car there, that aren't, you know, hopefully not driving around at that point, you know. So I, you know, whether it's, you know, putting just the wires underground or whatever we can to maximize what that would be, I would, I would be a proponent of that. And then along the same lines, what about battery storage? I thought we had talked about it, but I can't remember where we landed. Is there any battery storage, you know, looking at the resiliency of the building and hopefully, you know, creating some kind of microgrid? We're going to have the solar panels on the roof already.
Sure. We actually have, Mr. Keenan can also address that as well from, from the project standpoint.
Yes. There's, fortunately, there is an existing generator onsite. And we were trying to utilize that. That was one of the directions we had early on, was to try to, since it's a fairly new generator, to try to utilize that as our, our backup on the power. We have a space located for battery storage. We also have conduits running for the future battery storage so that as that existing generator phases out, maybe in the next few decades, that there's space for, for the, for batteries to be installed. Currently, with Tesla, the roofing system, they, they provide, they do not require battery storage for the commercial type of system. It's a very, their, their commercial batteries are very cost prohibitive. They're very expensive. But they're, and they're five foot by 30 foot. They're coming out with new mega packs, new battery storage that's going to be smaller and more efficient in the next, I think, 2000, quarter three, 2024. So there's some stuff that's going to be coming up. But we do have the infrastructure there for battery storage. And it's, the conduits are, are laid out so that they are connected to the inverter system that we will be installing at the, at the electrical room.
And when you say existing generator, how is that powered?
It's a diesel generator with a blow-ground tank.
Oh, okay.
It's existing from the warehouse that's being demolished.
Okay. Well, that's disappointing. I mean, it's not disappointing that, that it's there, but I, I would hope that we can try to avoid using diesel, especially if this is a project funded by, you know, reducing greenhouse gas.
No, and, and part of it is the, there's kind of two aspects to it. There's the Tesla roof system, which is the solar portion of it. And really, for the backup power as in case of an emergency, we certainly understand the desire to move towards battery storage. But it's, you know, it's, it's a close to $100,000 diesel generator that has a significant amount of life left. If at some point, there's a decision to move that somewhere else or get rid of it, I mean, that, that could certainly be discussed and thought through. But every step of the process, we've, we've had this be part of it. And so to try to change that now is just going to add that funding gap a little, a little harder to, to find a way to cover. But we definitely have been trying to find every single way to score higher on, on lead. And we recognize that, you know, that's not ideal to have, but it is something that's better for an emergency to, to be fail-safe at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Keston.
Yeah, I, I don't have a lot to add. The questions I was interested in got asked. I just wanted to sort of add, I think it's great how you're reaching out to all the different groups, including the CHMASH and the work of the Design Review Board. It looks great. It really does. And I commend the work that you guys have done. It's going to be a really beautiful building. So that's, that's all I had.
Do we have any speakers that would like to speak to this?
If any member of the public wishes to speak to this item, please use the raised hand icon and I will call any of them. Seeing none, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I think I'm, we're looking for a motion.
I'm happy to make the motion. Let me get it up here. Well, I guess the motion would just be to authorize the city manager to set aside $1 million as committed.
million as committed fund balance for a possible match for supplemental Transit and Inner City Rail Capital Program, requested funding for the Galita Train Depot project from the city's unassigned fund balance.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Not seeing none, then we will do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Kasdan.
Aye.
Councilmember Kiriako.
Aye.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
Aye.
Mayor Portem Por Richards.
Yes.
And Mayor Perotti.
Aye. It's unanimous, ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you so much.